I call the special meeting of the Oceanside City Council to order. If you would stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberated and free of all.
We can start with a roll call, please.
Mayor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
And we'll go to our general item, which is adoption of a resolution ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency, and we'll have a report by our city manager, Deanna Larson.
So, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I have an oral report. We also have a few staff that are going to contribute to a report. To start with, the reason why we're here today is we did issue an emergency proclamation on March 16th. The proclamation now enables the city to take additional legal, operational, and recovery measures that may be needed to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic that is affecting our community. This must be ratified by the city council within seven days. Also, on Monday, March 16th, we activated the Emergency Operations Center at Level Three. I'm going to have John provide a Brown Act update, and then Rick will provide a public health update, and then I will be back to provide a synopsis of the city's actions to date and continue from there.
I'll just go ahead and give that from here. When the meeting was noticed, the city was operating under Governor Newsom's Executive Order 2520 issued last week pertaining to the Brown Act. That order suspends several requirements of the Act, especially those that relate to teleconferencing and public participation. Last week's order allows members of the council and staff to participate through telephonic means without many of the more cumbersome requirements of the Brown Act that we really are not capable of complying with on a practical level. But however, the executive order does place some limits on the ability to have council members call in. For example, the order requires the city to establish one publicly accessible place where members of the public can provide public comment at the meeting. That's probably the most significant requirement of that order. I did have a conference call with the other city attorneys in the region this morning. We all talked about how each other are complying with that particular executive order. San Diego, for example, is limiting their council chambers to 10 people total, but they've set up Golden Hall adjacent to the council chambers as the publicly accessible space where members of the public can provide that comment, but they're still attempting to enforce the social distancing spacing requirement. Others have just limited capacity of their council chambers. As you know, there's a public health order that basically prohibits assemblages of over 50 people and requires a six-foot social distancing requirement. That's the route we've chosen today for this meeting. As you can see, most of the seats have been blocked off, but there is a publicly accessible place to provide public comment. The meeting is also televised, and the city's been accepting electronic comments through the city clerk's office, and I believe those have all been provided to you. However, the governor just issued a revised executive order on the Brown Act, and basically that order continues to allow members of the city council to participate telephonically. However, the requirement to have one publicly accessible space has been eliminated. So cities may now allow public to participate telephonically or electronically. The council members can, if you would like, to participate telephonically at future meetings during the pendency of this state of emergency, you will be able to. If a meeting is held using telephonic means, public will be allowed to participate electronically or telephonically. The city also has to implement a procedure for receiving and swiftly resolving complaints on reasonable accommodation for those with disabilities, and we will have to advertise that procedure every time we give a public hearing notice. So assuming you wish to operate in compliance with that executive order that's just been issued, we would add the appropriate language to future agendas. The public would not be allowed to attend the meeting in the council chambers if you so elect, and we will, as I said, put the appropriate language on future agendas and implement procedures allowing members of the public to provide comments either electronically or telephonically through the city clerk's office, as we did for this meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sanchez, do you have a question?
Yes. So are we set up already to be able to get questions from the public as of today, or is that something that's going to happen in near future?
I believe we are. We set up a, on the agenda, we had language for this meeting stating how members of the public can provide written comments to the city council up until the time that the item was heard. The clerk's office has been forwarding all those comments to the council. Any comments that are received today or at the start of the meeting before an item is called would be provided by the city clerk's office.
Okay, so we, there is a phone in, a phone number that is set up so that if a member of the public wanted to call in a question would be presented to us via the clerk's office?
So the, we allowed the chambers to be publicly accessible today. I don't believe there's a phone-in number today. We don't have to make it both electronic, electronically available and telephonically available, although we could.
Okay.
So we'll have to, we're all, this just, order just came out, so we're all going to have to internally meet and ensure that we can meet its requirements.
Right, because I think that some people at home will not know, are there going to be, and I understand there are 25 seats that are available respecting the six-foot separation, so there are actually not that many people here today. But in the future, if we can please provide for members of the community, of the public to call in questions, perhaps have some kind of cutoff time so that the clerk can be able to do that efficiently. I do want to say that I was able to, once I found out about how we were going to be responding to the governor's orders, that is, requiring the six feet separation, I did post that on social media to alert people, posted that on Monday, to make sure that people were not going to be upset, that they would not be able to come in. So apparently, they are respecting the city's request that we not have over 25 people here. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask a yes or no. Can we do exactly what we've done here for any meeting in the future without the telephonically?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. I guess, Rick Robinson, your fire chief. I'm going to give you a brief update. I'm going to try and stay away from a lot of the details that you've probably heard over the last few weeks and days. We've all been inundated with emails and updates. I do want to work, this is from the most recent situation report from the county of San Diego. I just thought I'd work backwards on this from a total worldwide global reports of COVID-19. We have just under 197,000 confirmed cases with just under 8,000 deaths reported. On a national level, about 5,700 confirmed cases with just under 100 deaths. Statewide, 472 confirmed cases with 11 deaths reported in California as of 5:00 last night. And then today, locally for San Diego County, we have a total of 60 reported positive cases. 51 of those are San Diego County residents, five are from the federal quarantine area at Miramar, and four are non-San Diego County residents. Of those, 10 have been hospitalized, and we have zero deaths in the county. I know of no known positive COVID-19 reports here in the city of Oceanside. I checked before I came over, and no one was able to give me a affirmative that we have any. I called Tri-City Hospital, talked to them, and they had no positive COVID-19 cases at this time. The city attorney mentioned it, some of the, the emergency orders that came from the state and now in the county. Again, the, where it started off is groups at 250. It is now all events with 50 or more people in a single space at the same time are, we should have no more than that. The, we know about the closing of the businesses, the bars and the restaurants, except for takeout, those actions that have been taken, the social distancing, the closing of the schools. And then in the latest advisory, a strong recommendation is made that all persons 65 years old or older who have a chronic underlying condition or have a compromised immune system self-quarantine themselves at home. That's the latest on the emergency declaration. All the information I've been able to find and read, it still says that a risky healthy person, the risk to a healthy person continues to remain low. We've already talked about the persons over 65 and those with compromised health issues. The symptomology still is basically a fever, over 100 degrees, dry cough, runny nose, and shortness of breath. And I just want to mention that there's a lot of differentiation. These symptoms are very similar to many other illnesses, the flu, colds, sinus conditions, things such as that. The differentiators that we look for are the fever, of course. Remember, flu, you often have fever and chills, where with this, it's primarily a fever, over 100 degrees, that dry cough, and the shortness of breath. Typically, with influenza, you would not have that shortness of breath. You might have the body aches and the other things, the fatigue. The best practices are still what we've been talking about since the outbreak of this. If you're feeling sick, do not come to work. That's what we're telling people, isolate yourself. Telecommute as many and as often as, as many personnel and as often as possible. Frequent 20-second hand washing, seven to 10 times a day is the minimum recommended amount. If you're much less than that, consider washing your hands even more. Using alcohol-based hand sanitizers in between, not as a replacement for hand washing, but as in between until you can wash your hands. Keep hands and face away from, or your hands away from your face and mouth. Remember that these viruses need a portal to get into your body. Your skin is a good blockage of that, and if you get your hands in, up to your face, then you're creating a portal. Practice good cough and sneeze hygiene. Protect others, use tissues, dispose of them properly. Social distancing, practicing that, and we've seen that a lot. Keep individual work areas clean and sanitized. I can just tell you, just anecdotally, in my office, we have a stand-down time when somebody in the office is designated to go around and make sure everybody's wiping down their work areas and space, and I know a lot of the other directors are following those kind of things. And then just good preventative health techniques. Eat well, stay rested, minimize the stress, those kind of things that allow us to be Other than that, just the recommendations are to monitor our workforce, look for people who may be exhibiting symptoms, remove them from the workplace, which we have instituted that here, taking temperatures of oncoming and outgoing personnel. I know we're doing that in the fire department every day. When the firefighters arrive, we have them take their temperature during the shift and then before they go home, to monitor that and keep logs. And we've talked about that with, with our directors for those who need to do that. And again, talking about the telecommuting of personnel to minimize exposure. That's really all I had for you on the brief update, but I am here to answer any questions, and I'll be here to the end of the meeting.
Thanks, Chief. And so I have just an overview of, a synopsis of the key actions that the city has taken. We have canceled all public gatherings with 250 people or more, including our boards in commission meetings, and a list of closures and cancellations is posted to the city's webpage and is being updated frequently. Department heads are reviewing their operations and making changes to comply with the health order and promote public safety. I provided the following goals in this regard: protect public health, provide essential services, prepare to reopen services, minimize the economic impact, and preserve the city's financial health. We've closed all of our public counters where we do not have a glass service window, including the first floor of City Hall, both in the Development Services, Water Utilities area as well as the cashier, and we are requiring the public conduct, to conduct business online or by phone. We are maintaining that six-foot social distancing within work areas, and we are telecommuting whenever feasible and meeting via conference call and not having in-person meetings. We have also increased the cleaning schedules at City Hall and throughout the day. As Rick indicated, departments are cleaning, but we also have staff going through the building and cleaning all areas. Our communications effort is being led by Teri Gorman-Brown, who's serving as our public information officer. We have sent seven news releases since March 10 with another one planned for this afternoon. She has made 24 Facebook posts. We have 19,000, just a little more than 19,000 followers. 33 Twitter posts. We have over 17,000 Twitter followers. She's made 10 Nextdoor posts since February 27th, and all of the city departments are resharing and posting updates as well. She is updating the webpage frequently, and we have a link on our city homepage. We also have public service announcements regarding preventative measures playing on KOC T's government channel. We have coordinated with the county health department to play, place wash stations in areas throughout the city and community gathering spaces. Neighborhood services staff have been reaching out to residential care for the elderly providers to ensure that they are making preparations, and they have also been working with food service providers to make sure that those in need, especially seniors, have access to food. We've been working with our business organizations to promote carryout, to share resources and identify needs. And as I said, this is just a synopsis and overview. We have taken many other actions to implement the orders and adjust our operations accordingly. Part of that is putting together a continuity of operations plan, which is being led by Assistant City Manager Michael Gossman. He's going to provide a brief overview of that document, and then after he speaks, I will discuss budget and personnel actions that we have taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager. As Deanna had mentioned, I'm going to give you an update on the continuity of operations planning that we've conducted thus far. So on Friday, March 13th, staff began developing a pandemic-specific continuity of operations plan for the city of Oceanside. This is also known as a COOP. The COOP is based on best management practices and templates from FEMA, CAL-OES, and the San Diego County Office of Emergency Services. It does the following: it identifies and prioritizes essential services. It identifies them both as critical or long-term essential services. Critical essential services are those that you cannot stop, either by mandate or at significant risk to public health and safety. Think things like police, fire, water. Long-term essential are things that can stop temporarily but really need to resume within the next 30 days. Many of the city's services are going to fall under long-term essential, because that's what we do. We do essential services. That's our role. But there are some things that just can't stop, and those are identified as critical essential services and planned for in the COOP. This also includes succession planning for top management. It identifies individual staff for each essential function. It provides a telecommuting assessment, which essential functions could be done remotely, and it identifies alternative vendors for a critical commodity and external services needs. It also includes best management practices for working during a pandemic, in other words, infection control measures, some of the things that Deanna alluded to. A reconstitution plan, that is, how do we bring back all these services that we put to the side and reopen City Hall? And it includes checklists for both implementation of the COOP and reconstitution. I'll hand it back to Deanna, but I'm available for questions if you have any.
So in terms of the city's budget, directors have been notified to stop any nonessential spending. Good news is, our forecast was very conservative, and it includes cushions beyond the 1.31 million surplus that we previously identified. And we have been building up our reserves, which can help preserve essential services on a short-term basis. We have 20.4 million in our Healthy Cities Reserve. We have approximately 11 million in our Section 115 trust for pension PERS costs, and another 11.1 million in our city PERS set-aside to address those costs. Additionally, investment earnings were not included in the forecast. Per policy, one-third of our investment earnings go to pay down the PERS unfunded balance. The balance is primarily split between the general fund and water utilities, and therefore reduced earnings are not a significant operational impact. We do have at least six months of operating cash available, and I have instructed everyone to prepare a bare-bones budget for next year because early action is essential to minimize any financial impact. In terms of personnel, I approve three emergency administrative directives to facilitate operations during this emergency. These provide for telecommuting, advancement of leave, and changes of work location during this emergency. Approximately 5.5% of the city's funded positions are vacant, and we have reviewed all of our recruitments in process and postponed all but essential positions. And what that means is, those positions are in the budget, but if they're vacant, we're not spending the money, and that will help our budget come in lower than budgeted as well. And then in order to provide greater peace of mind to employees and provide for increased absences, management would recommend providing all employees with two weeks of non-cashable emergency special leave apart from their existing leave banks during this emergency. This would encourage employees who are ill to stay home and would assist those with childcare issues without affecting other planned uses of leaves. In particular, we may have employees who have a planned surgery, and using sick leave could impact that kind of action. And providing two weeks would provide a cushion, a peace of mind and a cushion should council want to authorize that. And then as Michael indicated, the COOP will include a recovery plan. That effort will be led by him and Economic Development Manager Michelle Geller to reopen city services but also assist the community, including businesses, in recovering from the pandemic emergency. And that will be done in collaboration with department heads and the business community as far as businesses are concerned. And so at this time, we would request council approval of the resolution ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency, and all of our city departments are represented either in the room or accessible nearby should you have any questions of myself or any departments. Thank you.
Do we have any public on this item?
There is no public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. First for the chief, I had a couple of questions. Thank you very much, Chief, for, for talking about what we're doing to maintain the safety of our public safety personnel. You talked about taking the temperature of...
Yes.
Coming and going. What other things are you doing to ensure the public safety of our, especially the public safety personnel?
Okay, if I, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers...
Are there tests, you know?
Are there tests? No, nobody's being tested right now unless they are, have a confirmed exposure and symptomatic, they're showing symptoms. But we do have an operations plan in place. We have very strict guidelines for, as our people respond, it actually starts with our dispatchers, who are screening the calls, taking the 911 calls, and then they're asking specific questions to alert members who are responding to those type of calls. And when they have a suspected COVID-19 patient, they are putting on all their protective equipment. It's not optional, it's mandatory.
Do we have enough of that?
We have enough for the numbers that we're seeing right now. We are monitoring, we have, of course, we have a cash in place for disasters such as this and for emergencies. We haven't tapped into that yet. We're still using our normal supply chain, but we are working with the county to increase our supply of emergency equipment.
A lot of the discussion lately has been about capacity and whether or not we're going to be able to have enough hospital beds. Can you talk a little bit about that for specifically how it's going to relate to Oceanside residents?
Well, I can, I can only tell you on my most recent call with Tri-City, I do stay in touch with them. They are fine now, they have plenty of capacity. They have a, just like us, they have a plan in place. They have a tent out in the parking lot ready to go should we need to do, have additional space for screening and patient arrival and things like that. But I don't have the capacity numbers with me, but there is a county-wide capacity report that is done through the county every day as to what, how many patients can be taken and seen. So right now, I think in our immediate area, it hasn't been a problem.
Okay. And you talked about the closure, unfortunately, of a lot of our businesses, the restaurants and bars. Where are we at that? Is the city actually having, say, police or fire go out to the different restaurants and bars to see where we are?
The police chief might be wanting to talk directly about that.
Okay.
We did talk about that on our conference call, and I think he can answer that better than I can.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Sanchez, specifically to your question, the businesses in our community have been responsive to the health officer's order. We have responded to a couple of businesses that were not responding to that order, but once we arrived and explained and showed them the order, we did obtain compliance. So at this point in time, it does appear that businesses are responding to the health officer's order. If we do get any complaints from citizens that we have businesses that are not complying, we'll definitely go forward and, and speak with those businesses. On a educational note, we tried to go out to businesses early yesterday with copies of the health officer's order to ensure compliance, but it sounded like through their, their own communication channels, a lot of businesses already had that information.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a list of, because the order allowed for takeout, do we have a list of businesses that are going to be proceeding forward with takeout?
So Councilmember Sanchez, Mayor and councilmembers, Michelle Geller is here. We have worked with Main Street, Oceanside, and the Chamber of Commerce to assemble those lists. Main Street's was put online last night, and we shared that, and the chamber just released theirs earlier today. And Michelle, if you can elaborate on that topic at all, please do.
Certainly, thank you. As Deanna said, Main Street, Oceanside, and the chamber have compiled lists of restaurants that are offering takeout and delivery options. And then, you know, as part of the economic recovery effort, some of the things we had discussed, we kind of did a brainstorming, are providing A-frame signs for those restaurants so that there's a, you know, a visual way for people to see as they're driving by, like, oh, that, that restaurant does takeout, great. Other ideas like reinvesting the base business license fee that we get, we get about $350,000 a year with that, maybe reinvesting that money into a marketing plan to do, say, like an Oceanside Restaurant Week when everything comes back. There's other ideas like restaurant bonds, which is kind of a creative idea. You basically can buy gift cards at discounts now to use later at a restaurant when all this is behind us. So there, there are lots of ideas. We're working closely with Visit, with Main Street, with the chamber, to get the restaurants and all the businesses, you know, to survive through this and to be, you know, recovered at the end.
And do we, can we have a link to the city's website, to the list of businesses that are offering takeout to try to survive this really bad situation?
Yes, it's up, they're up now.
Up now, okay, thank you.
And being shared widely on social media. It's probably like the best news anybody has seen in the last few days, so everyone's really happy in sharing it.
Yes, I had been asked, well, who has a list? And so, thank you. I did get a question from a business who asked, they had heard some information about evictions and staying of evictions, and not really clear about the details, and also that the city of San Diego has adopted a resolution regarding evictions. As to first businesses, this is a business question, is there anything that is being done to allow businesses to not pay, because they have to close, not pay rent? Would they have to pay that later on, you know, in, over time? You know, those kind of questions.
So there is nothing that I'm aware of at the city level that authorizes either a commercial or a residential tenant not to pay their rent. The governor's executive order that he recently issued...
Was residential?
No, it covers commercial as well. No, it covers commercial as well.
Okay.
So, it does allow and authorize local governments to potentially adopt ordinances that restrict residential and commercial evictions during the pendency of the state of emergency. I should tell you, there already is a Penal Code Section 396 that prohibits residential evictions and reletting the space at a higher rent during the period covered by a state of emergency. So it's initially that first 30 days, but then also any time period that it's extended. That addresses the residential side. I'm not aware of any comparable provision for the commercial, but it is something I will be exploring, and I am meeting with the other city attorneys next Wednesday at 9:00 to discuss that issue. No city has adopted one yet, I should say. San Diego referred it to their staff to bring it back at a future meeting.
So it's not something we can do today?
No, it is not.
Back staff to look into this?
I will look into this and report back to you at a future meeting, at your next Wednesday's meeting as the results of that discussion continues amongst the attorneys. At most, it would be a restriction on going to court and getting an eviction of a residential or commercial tenant during the time period. It would not cover anything authorizing tenants not to pay. But we need to work through, and we are collectively as a group of city attorneys, looking at that issue. Because there are very specific legal issues that may come up, especially under the Fifth Amendment, that we want to be careful of.
Thank you. So as to both residential and commercial, for us to go forward on some kind of an order, we'd have to have you come back and work on both of them. Couldn't do that today for residential either.
No, we, Chula Vista has, I think, the furthest along. I have a template of their proposal. Nothing's been adopted in the county yet. I could report back to you, though, on Wednesday at our regular meeting on that issue.
Mayor and councilmembers, and councilmember Sanchez, I do want to point out that the city, particularly in the harbor, is the landlord for some restaurant and business tenants, and that might be an issue that you might want to undertake as a policy directive. Of course, that does impact the city on the revenue side, but we've already heard concerns from some of those businesses as well.
Okay, so yeah, I would really want staff to be looking into that for both residential and commercial. Homeless, Deanna, we've had some discussions about, questions about homeless and what other efforts we're doing to address homeless, especially with regards to the coronavirus pandemic.
So there are efforts underway countywide, and staff are participating in those to identify locations for homeless persons who are quarantined, either because they are, have symptoms or have a potential exposure. We are coordinating with the county on those efforts. Homeless outreach team is continuing to provide services. We continue to have our whole package of resources available to house people. And so, for the most part, our homeless operations are continuing as they have been, of course, with extra precautions in place to avoid any exposures.
Questions that I shared with you are, can we take over some kind of motel or something in Oceanside? What kind of spaces can we have, since the state is already looking into that? And news blackout with respect to the cities by the county. I really appreciate that the county is allowing us to know the numbers and the age groups, but the county seems to be not allowing us to have the information about where the positive tests are coming from. And they're saying it's because of HIPAA, which is actually private information, not the fact that someone actually has a condition. Is there anything that we can do to find out what is happening in Oceanside?
So, councilmembers, councilmember Sanchez, mayor and council, as the fire chief indicated, he's been in contact with the county to find what information he can find out. This was a topic on the city manager's call. The city managers are having a weekly call, including public health officials. We have another one actually scheduled for 3:30 today. This was a topic in our call last week. The public health officials indicated they would look into the matter of whether they can report to us when there are local cases, so I expect to hear an update on that a little later today. We are asking for non-confidential information to be shared where possible.
Okay, thank you. And my apologies to my colleagues for taking so much time on these questions, or questions that were forwarded to me. I want to go ahead and adopt the resolution for the proclamation of local emergency. So thank you very much. Thank you for everyone that is working so hard on behalf of the citizens of Oceanside.
Councilmember Kimes?
So when this all began to unfold, and obviously, this is a very fluid situation, obviously, the impact to our economy was, you knew right away it was going to be severe. And especially when you see where Oceanside has come in the last 15 years, it's frustrating to have so much momentum and to have something that's out of control of our business owners, everyone that's put so much hard work into the city. We have so many locally-owned, successful businesses that are doing great and are very scared right now. And I completely understand why. So Monday morning, I went to a last-minute meeting of restaurant owners, and I asked, I went there and just opened mine and asked, what can the city do to make your lives easier and get you through this? And I heard such a large array of concerns. And I think the frustrating part with the city government is we only have oversight over certain things. And, you know, that's part of where the memo came from that the mayor and I authored, is what do we have control over? What can we do to make our residents and business owners' lives easier? But also, we need to advocate for the different levels of government that can help as well. So county, state, and federal. And we need to make sure that we get our residents' concerns to those officials and get some kind of action. So, I mean, we have to, I think we're doing a good job in the emergency response. We have our fire chief, police chief, city manager are on top of it. I have a lot of confidence after sitting down and talking with all of them the last several days. But we also need to be planning, and I think we're starting for an economic recovery for whenever we're up and moving again. So, you know, depending on what happens, how fluid the situation is, we need to be prepared for that now. So as soon as business is back as normal, we know exactly what we need to do and get it done. So on that, I have been reaching out to our local elected officials for an economic recovery working group. And I have commitments from Congressman Levin's office, state assembly member Tasha Borner Horvath's office, and the county of San Diego, our supervisor Jim Desmond's office, who all pledged to send delegates to a working group. I also have a commitment from the Chamber of Commerce and Visit Oceanside, so we can all get in one room, hear concerns from residents and businesses, and give those directly to that level of government that can make a difference. So whether it's a state regulation that needs to be rolled back for a few months, whether it's a county health permit that needs to be made cheaper, or business, we can get everything done in that one meeting. So with that, I would like to ask my colleagues, I want to make a one specific amendment, ask my, or a motion, ask my colleagues to allow staff to spend more than four times to help facilitate that economic recovery working group, so our staff can work with staff from each local government to get this going. So I'll make that motion.
We still have other speakers, so I'll hold that. Councilman Rodriguez? Or did you have more?
No, I-
Okay. Besides that amendment, did you have anything else you wanted to go over? Just a second, okay. Thank you for putting this together and giving that update. I have some specific questions with respect to enforcement of the county health officials' orders. Police chief, if you can come up, one moment, please. We have a very, very small window of time to really and aggressively do what we can to prevent the spread of this in our county and our city. I know you were saying that if a resident complains about a gathering or a business that's not open, then you move forward in response to that. What initiative efforts is the police department taking on enforcing this order and looking for those businesses that have not complied?
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Rodriguez, obviously, our officers are out there on a daily basis, driving around. If they do see things that are in violation of the health officer's order, they will stop and talk with whoever may be violating that order to, number one, educate them, and number two, ensure compliance with that health officer's order. It's not something we're just going to drive by and ignore.
Got it. So we're not waiting for a call, we're actively looking at the restaurant or bars open? Hey, guys, you know, we have an order, we need to clear this, clear this out, kind of a dynamic.
So we are proactively, absolutely. But I think more importantly, the citizens are our eyes and ears as well. And anytime that they see something that's in violation of the health officer's order, for them to be able to call our police department so that we can ensure that we go out there and take corrective action.
Perfect, thank you. Deanna, in reference to the coop and putting that together, what is the timeframe of having that back to council for presentation and approval?
So, councilmember Rodriguez, honorable mayor and councilmembers, the first effort was to get worksheets out to all the departments to assemble the necessary information. Most departments have already done that. I asked the remaining departments to get that back today. So it's of urgency that it be done. I don't know that it's a document that requires council approval, but certainly, we will share it with the council. And if you wish to have a presentation on that, we could do that. And if you have any more detailed questions, I would ask Michael to come up to answer them, since he is leading that effort.
Yes, Michael, if you can step up for a moment, please, sir. I, in my opinion, I think the next 10 to 14 days are critical in getting individuals that are not essential out of City Hall and home and set up to work from home. In your opinion, what is, obviously, public safety is a part of that, but what else is considered essential or critical that we can get on that as soon as possible to everybody else? Hey, just, you guys got to go home.
Yeah, I think that we're really well along the way. We now have all of the departmental reports up on what that is. We'll be taking a look at those this afternoon. Going back to what I was saying earlier, there was one piece of essential that I left out. There is essential that's public health and safety, that just, there are personnel that you can't not have working. Then you look at which ones of those are able to work from home, and you send them home. Because there's this component of support services that may not seem, they're not like the kind of the ones that make the headlines, but payroll. You can't stop payroll, but maybe that's a position that can work from home. Completely agree that in this case, the coop is playing two roles. Not only is it playing the role of making sure that the essential services continue, which is our primary purpose and existence, but it's also helping with that overall reduction in public health risk of moving people out who don't need to be here, because it's those locuses of people that we're trying to avoid and that the public health as a whole is trying to do. So I think you're dead on in terms of reducing the numbers, and there are two ways to do that. It's reduce the number of services, i.e. the coop, and it's ensure that those who can work from home, work from home.
So this is, this plan and this document is evolving, and is action being taken as it's evolving?
Yeah.
So, you know, individual, like tomorrow, if it's decided these individuals are not essential, they need to go home and start collecting the, you know, two weeks' pay? Like, you guys got to go home and be with your families.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No problem.
But I'll reference how FEMA indicates. They recommend, their best management practice is that you identify a person that makes that decision that, okay, we're going to move to an essential services model, and it's, and we're going to enact the coop. That's when you pull out this coop checklist and you start going down it. Typically, that person is the chief executive officer. In this case, that would normally be the city manager. Of course, you're the city council, you can make decisions otherwise. And even though, as I'm describing what is typically considered essential services and as how we're moving forward, as the council, you can make other decisions and say, okay, you may consider those essential services, Mr. Gosman, but we think this is an essential service also, and that is within your purview. My recommendation would be that we finish this document today, and then we share the document with the council. And you'll see that it's a rather simple document, but it's, it does include a lot of best management practices and good information on how you go about rolling it out. And it's something you're supposed to be able to just pull off the shelf, open up that checklist and go. Does that help answer?
No, absolutely. I think what's important to me is that non-essentials are, they just, they go home. And it's not a voluntary base, it's, hey, you guys got to go home, be with your family, we're taking care of your pay and benefits, go home, do what you need to do, and then make it happen. I, you know, I think 14 days is great. I don't know what that looks like from a budgetary standpoint. I think that I would like to consider that to be a little longer, maybe up to three weeks. I don't know what the impacts that would be on our budget, but that would be a modification I would like to potentially incorporate as a part of this, this order. Obviously, from TOT tax to sales tax across the board, our finances are going to be greatly, greatly impacted. Thank you, Michael. Are going to be greatly impacted. Deanna, what efforts do you see as far as modifying our annual budget and our, even our five-year budget? I know we have a budget workshop coming up. What do you entail that looks like? And what efforts are being made now to prepare for that?
Mayor and council, councilmember Rodriguez, as I mentioned, I've already said, only essential spending. So we've started immediately to, even though it's budgeted, you don't get to spend it. You need to really look, department heads, at what you need to spend. And we will be then looking at a bare-bones budget. All of the departments have already submitted budget information that we've been in a review process. And so we'll be going back and saying, okay, what can you eliminate? What can you cut? We were looking at, you know, possible some service restorations. Those aren't going to be able to happen now. We're going to be going backwards in terms of service levels, but that's something that will be essential that all the department directors will need to focus on in terms of preparing the budget for next year. You know, it's kind of a little unknown what our workload's going to be. We have the budget workshop scheduled for April 29th. If we have to send everybody home, department heads will still need to focus on that. But it's going to be a big lift to get all this done by April 29th, and if we can even have a public meeting to discuss the budget at that time. But clearly, the direction is cut as much as you can. I've been through multiple budget recessions. I personally was laid off early in my career because of recession and budget cuts, so I'm very sensitive to that, and very sensitive to our employees. I don't want to have to lay employees off. I'm also very cognizant of the city's role in our local economy and keeping it strong. And so there's a lot of factors to balance. But ultimately, if we don't have a healthy financial situation for the city, we can't provide the services that the city needs, and so that's of utmost priority.
Perfect, thank you very much. So I think really the only, I'm definitely down with councilmember Kimes's modification, but I would like to look at a 21, more closer to a 21-day leave for city employees that are non-essential, that need to take off. And that's, oh, the last question, sorry. How are we going to be handling city utility services? For example, if somebody doesn't pay their water bill, we usually shut it off. Is that something that would be stayed during this period of time as well?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, yes. We will not be shutting off the water, and we also have a deferred payment plan that is available for residents. And we also have suspended all street sweeping citations, trying to be cognizant people are at home and trying to reduce any impacts on them in that regard.
What about parking tickets?
Parking enforcement is still occurring outside of street sweeping. That is a service that we will evaluate as an essential service. Clearly, there will be needs for parking enforcement, blocking hydrants, issues like that, and we'll need to evaluate that further.
Thank you. And we'll do, I think it would be easier to just do multiple motions when we get to that point. Deputy Mayor Fowler?
Thank you. As far as citations that are not related to the services we provide, but parking and that type of thing is still a law. I mean, it's still what we have. They can't just, just because it's one of those things, like running a stop sign or driving too slow in front of a fire truck with their lights on. So my hat's off to Terry for all the effort she's put into getting this out to thousands of people. I've read everything she's put out, because I think it's important to have that. They do talk about loans, federal loans, for businesses that will be, that'll be low-cost loans through the federal government for anybody that has a business that feels like they need it. I think everyone is so aware. I think everyone is so aware. I've, I've probably been places I shouldn't have, being probably the, pretty close to the oldest person in the room. The, but, but people are, are, other than their shopping habits, pretty much going along normally with their own local gatherings. And so, I think we've, we've done everything since this has become an issue urgently. It, it hasn't been, you know, usually it could get people to stop and talk for a minute. I'm good at that. They really have, have busy schedules now. Everybody upstairs is just, you know, I, I don't wanna be sent home because I like my office, so please don't make me go home yet, even as an old guy. I, I suggest we do the process that we have here today for anything going further. And, you know, you might have to refine it a little bit as people maybe could replace people that are in the, in the building or something like that if they, if their issue is over. So, in order to continue to do business here. Most of all, I, I mean, I support what the, what Ryan and, and and actually Peter as well have come up with. So, I, I really, I think that's an, probably an important thing to, to follow through on. And whatever, I, I would suggest that probably two people from our city, because that's what we're actually doing the, the meeting on, is our city. We should probably have two people from the council, and I would suggest Ryan be one of them and probably the mayor as well. And the last thing, I, I was going to leave town, but I realized that I'm not really gonna be able to see my mother during this time. But I, so I started shopping and I, I got frantic overseeing the shelves in the stores. And I'm, I'm pretty sure you've all seen it, if you've, if you've been out. And it is overwhelming to, to see what you think would be happening in third, third world countries when it's right here in our city. So, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. And I just hope and pray all of you can just take this without too much frustration and keep a calm because Deanna and her staff have, have got everything in really good hands for our city. And I think if we just keep calm and, and not hype the hype, just, just get out there and, and continue to live. If you have to, if they come down with some sort of stay-at-home, you know, it probably won't be fun, but it's probably the right thing to do at that point. So, I just, I, that's all I really have to say. Thanks.
Okay, so Councilmember Sanchez made a motion to adopt the resolution. I presume that's with the recommendations. And I will sec, we'll take these in order, and I'll second that motion. Councilmember Sanchez?
Right, thank you. I had a question based on a conversation that was happening with Councilmember Rodriguez with respect to the continuity of operations in critical essential services. I know that the library has already closed. Initially, it was, you know, just gonna have people drop off books and maybe pick up some books to keep people busy, you know, but now it's completely closed. Housing, I understand, is still open because that is, I understand, critical. But what about code enforcement?
And so, Mayor and council members, Councilmember Sanchez, with regard to housing, we also have to operate under HUD orders relative to our housing authority. And so, although some may not see that as essential service, we do have obligations to stay open there.
Right.
We are doing our utmost to put the social distancing in place for all of those staff and the public. With regard to the libraries, they attempted to open to allow book pickup and drop off and realizing they had challenges with the social distancing, we did close. They are, however, encouraging the use of all the online resources and have instituted a procedure to bring library books to people, deliver library books, so that people have something to read while they are stuck at home. With regard to code enforcement, we have continued that effort because particularly with residents home, there could be more opportunity for issues to be, that we could become aware of. And as the deputy mayor stated, the laws are still in effect. And so, absent any direction from council to cease code enforcement, we have continued that effort.
Is that something that people can be commuting from home and being, you know, assigned to whatever case from home? Or do, are, are people still in the office?
You know, Megan probably needs to address the particulars. One of the difficulties we have with some telecommuting is city documents. And we don't really, we need to maintain custody of them and not let them get lost at home as well as there are a lot of confidentiality and security protocols we have to follow that wouldn't allow documents to be taken out of the office. And so, that comes into play as we're evaluating jobs that can be done remotely in that regard. Megan?
Councilmember Sanchez, Mayor and City Council, the housing office is operating for the housing authority and those functions do need to stay within the
We have homeless folks coming in still, right? Coming in during certain hours to the hot team?
To the hot team, yes. The hot team is still available and open to them. In housing, we are still processing all of our applications and everything. We are in contact with all of our participants and still processing all the needs that we can. Our staff cannot work remotely for that because all of the files are confidential and they cannot be taken home with them. So, we are still in a paper system under that, so all staff are still within the office, but we've separated everybody through social distancing. And we do have some staff that don't work under the housing authority that can work remotely. And although they do come in for any
That is
field services that they need to do.
That's probably where the most public are coming in, right? Are we doing checking temperatures for our employees to make sure that everybody's okay?
In our office, we are not checking temperatures. We're not one of the required offices to do so. I don't have personnel that are, to doctors that can render that for them. But we are, we do have the social distancing and we are using the Dropbox system. People can call in. We have notices that if they're sick, they should not be coming into the office. And then for code enforcement as well, they do come into the office to use their spaces if they need to, but most of the day they are in the field on their own for the most part.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second?
Did you wanna say something, Chief?
Just for a point of clarification, Honorable Mayor, council members, the hot team is, does not have office hours for people to come visit at this point in time. They are still making field contacts, but because of, of the pandemic out there, we are, we are not holding office hours. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Are the social workers are though, the, our social workers?
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
So, we had a motion by Councilmember Kime to allow him to have access to more than four hours of staff time. I will second that motion. Please vote. And there was a
Motion approved, five oh.
Put it, I'll put it as a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez to allow up to three weeks. And I'll second that and at the discretion of the city manager, if we need to allow that to occur, I think we should as well.
Flexible, basically, yeah.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
And then finally
Was that subject to the discretion of this
Stay calm, yes.
City manager? Okay, subject to the discretion of the city manager.
To that end, we will develop a policy to be followed to, that will get out to all staff on what that means, what you can and can't do with that leave balance.
And then, Mr. Mullen, you had talked about the executive order that came out just today.
Correct.
And I guess my question is, do we have the, do we have the technology to actually comply with that executive order? Not today, obviously not today, but for the next several meetings until that executive order is rescinded, can we comply with that?
Well, we have to make the meeting available either, if you folks wanted to call in, I think we have that capability. We'd have to make the meeting available electronically or telephonically to the public. I believe we should be able to make that available. We can provide the public with the opportunity to give comments electronically via the email that will be in the agenda, if that is your wish, as we did for this meeting. I see no reason why we can't do that. The meetings will be televised on K O C T. I would recommend if you're gonna go that route, then we have a telephone number from which they can call in too. And I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be allow that, allowed to, able to implement that. But I'd have to defer to Deanna and IT to make sure we can do it.
And Honorable Mayor and council members, I would suggest that we would have to set up a system where people call in and we take the messages and share it with you, or technology, I'm not sure if we can broadcast that to you live. But I would also suggest that we set a time to cut that off so that we just don't end up in hours and hours and hours of telephone conversations with people. And perhaps the three-minute rule as well as a cutoff point when someone can call in prior to the item being called on the agenda, perhaps.
And Mayor, those requirements we just talked about are should you choose not to make the public, publicly accessible location? So, if we're gonna close the council chambers to the public, then we have to do that. Councilmember Feller asked if we could just do what we did today. So, I guess we await your direction, how you wanna handle it.
I'm, I'm gonna move that we take whatever actions necessary to comply with the current executive order until such a time as it's rescinded.
I'll second that. But I don't know when, how will people know that there will be over twenty-five people coming? Unless they come in and then they would have to
No.
Do it electronically?
I, I believe what the mayor is referring to is the current executive order, which means we would not have the public in the chamber. We would only make it available electronically or telephonically. That's the intent of his motion.
Oh, I still would like to have the priority be that we have up to twenty-five people here, if, if that's possible.
The current executive order prohibits any public access.
It doesn't prohibit, it gives you the authority to not have public access, should you follow the requirements in that order.
No, I, I, I wouldn't be able to support that because we ought to at least try to have the public here. And then, in the alternative, if, if public members are turned away, we ought to be able to say, okay, you can participate, which is the law, electronically or by phone.
Just to be clear, what you did for this meeting, we put language on the agenda that instructed members of the public how to provide written comments on the agendized items. And we warned the public that their occupancy limits of this room would be substantially lower than we would traditionally have. We didn't identify how many people, but it is, I believe, twenty-eight, Deanna, is that correct?
No, it was still twenty-five.
Actually, we had to block off a few more seats to ensure separation from staff. So, I think we are more close to a twenty-five members of the public. That doesn't include those seated at the dais or the folks that are in chairs around the perimeter of the room or at the back counter.
Now, the public health order is no more than fifty, I believe, according to the fire chief. The CDC, though, has recommended no more than ten. So, you know, there's an inconsistency between that. If you wanted to go the more conservative route and have no more than ten or so, then we're gonna have to comply with what the executive order provides. We could do what we, we did today.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Could we just set a time limit on this, like the next sixty days? No, you know, no public, and here's the means and mechanisms for you to call in and ask your questions and kinda go that route?
I think we could do it meeting by meeting as the situation develops.
Councilmember Kime?
I think if you see the pattern happening, we have to prepare to have, you know, bigger, you know, today's fifty, tomorrow could be ten. So, if we have to prep for the council chambers being closed, that just makes sense. So, we, we have to get ready for that. So, I would support that.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
As, as you said, we can do this if, even if we comply with the other.
Yeah, as of today, we can, yes. Based on the current order, as I indicated to the mayor, this gives you the flexibility to do it. It doesn't require it.
That's good.
We have a motion in a second?
Excuse me, I'm gonna take my second away, but I would like to, us to consider an amendment, and that would be that that we prioritize.
At this point, we're, I would, my motion is to comply with the current executive order as it came out and
Right, but I'm offering an amendment at least that we, and it, based on the changing times, that we first try to accommodate the public as we are doing today, which was, which is a six, six-feet separation and, and knowing that we have up to twenty-five seats that we can offer the public. And if it gets to the point where the, there are other executive orders that say, you know, no public, then we comply at that time, so we have flexibility. That's my amendment.
Okay, I'll, I'll second your motion. Mayor?
Okay, well, we have an amended motion. Is anyone gonna second the amended motion? And it dies for lack of second, then we'll go with my motion, which is to implement the current executive order on a meeting-by-meeting basis. That was a second by Councilmember Kime, please vote.
And that means that we would have zero people, members of the public, at, say, next Wednesday's meeting, regardless of whether or not anything changes from today?
It means we have the ability to.
Yeah, no, I'm asking
I believe what the motion is, is to take advantage of the current executive order that limits public access to the chamber. So, there would be no members of the public, provided we comply with the requirements of that executive order. And I'm sure we're gonna be meeting today to make sure that we can fulfill those requirements.
So, the answer is, if this passes, then automatically next meeting, regardless of whether there are any changes by executive order, lowering it from, whatever, fifty down. If there are no changes, then we would have zero members of the public allowed at the next council meeting. Is that correct?
They'd have to, yeah, not in the chambers. They'd have to participate electronically or telephonically.
As well, we can participate electronically.
Correct.
We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion approved, four oh. Councilmember Sanchez abstaining?
Go to item two, which is public communications on off-agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
We currently have two speakers on off-agenda items. Our first speaker is Diane Wolke, to be followed by John Botorff.
Hi, Diane Wolke. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Retired nurse midwife and public health nurse and longtime practitioner of universal precautions. I'm gonna make every effort not to touch the fomite in front of me, and I'd encourage you all to do the same. Everybody's been grabbing the podium here. And bacteria and viruses can live several days on these fomites, including your microphones, your telephones. I first wanna mention quickly about the handwashing stations. If there is not a current protocol to maintain those in a clean manner, I would hate to see us go from one disease and pandemic to another. So, if there is not a current protocol, please, somebody get on that quickly. In regards to the suspension of the Brown Act, I hope that the public will still be informed with a minimum of seventy-two hours' notice regarding any agenda items. I want to stress the absolute vital importance of the public being able to phone in telephonically. It's the only mechanism that many people have of informing themselves fully on issues if they're not heavy hitter researchers like some of us are. And it would be absolutely unjust for this body to only reflect the views of, of the council members and staff members. So, telephonic communication, the ability to phone in and speak is absolutely vital. Because you're going to be suspending any non-essential sending, spending, I would like to see the synthetic turf feasibility study pulled from the agenda for next week.
It has been.
We, it is not an essential item. Twelve to fourteen million dollars on something that is hazardous to our children and other people's health. health and safety is a monumental concern. We have no business spending money we don't have. We have no business spending taxpayer money without taxpayer approval on such an item. And you've all been in receipt of numerous letters, there will be others that are still forthcoming. One of them is from Dr. Sarah Jean Royer from Scripps Institute of Oceanography. If you read to the bottom of her letter, she discusses the monumental emissions from synthetic turf. It's not just about the area of the playing field, it's about the exposed surface of every individual blade. So, we're talking about monumental emissions in direct conflict with the city's own cap. Okay? We don't have anything, anything meaningful at this point in our IPM. So, these fields would also require chemicals for cleaning of bacteria and mold, for weed abatement that grows through the turf. There is no mechanism at all for proper disposal of these fields. It's got to go. Please say no to synthetic turf. Thank you.
So, I'll try not to touch anything. So, thank you all for being here and for putting all the hard work, particularly city manager and city staff. I know this has got to be a, and our police officers and firemen as well, this has got to be a very trying time. Thank you so much for all you're doing. Obviously, as we were just discussing, not having public being able to be here means that public input is still important because as Diane was saying, there's a lot of things that happen that need public involvement and public communication and public visibility. I would ask, do not put, be sensitive, put what you put on the agenda. Anything that's sensitive to the public, like synthetic turf, do not put these items on the agenda if the public cannot be here and, and actively be involved. At the Parks and Rec meeting, March 2nd, Mark Olson presented a $14 million proposal, basically, to put synthetic turf into parks. It was, he said, would be presented to the city council on March 25th. I would ask, as Diane said, one, don't put that on the city agenda since public will not be here. Second of all, don't put on the agenda at all $14 million and a known health risk. We're, we're here today because of public health. Please don't go down this path. Synthetic turf is a major health issue and a budget issue. Talking to Nathan in Public Works, he has a staff member who managed grass turf, grass turf, the Olympic training grounds. I would ask council, ask him, direct him to look at our city playing fields and what can be done to make those fields healthy. Proper care of soils, looking at national, national areas and other playing fields. They can only have to be watered once a week, twice a week during the summer, and can be played seven days a week. There are much cheaper ways and much healthier ways to get playing fields for everyone without doing synthetic. On top of that, I've never heard any type of data as far as how many playing hours. We are short. All I hear is we're, we need more playing fields. What is proposed will not add any fields. It will simply replace grass with plastic. We need to identify what the actual problem is. If we need more hours, then figure out how many hours we need and how to use what we have creatively and selectively to get what we need. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kime, you have your light on.
So, yes, Mayor and Council, I guess I didn't explicitly state it, but part of reviewing the budget, making immediate decisions about what is essential, has included looking at what's coming on our future council agenda and pulling items that aren't pressing, that don't require action promptly. The synthetic turf is one of those items we pulled off the agenda. We anticipate that it might be included in the budget workshop, but as I said, we're still, we have to do a lot of work in order to prepare for that budget workshop, and, and things are continuing to evolve. So, at this point, the soonest that would be heard would be the public workshop on the budget. However, like I said, we are looking at essential items going on council agendas, and we are also being cognizant of items that would have a high degree of public interest. We do want to allow the public to participate, however, recognizing that's not very feasible right now. If those items can be postponed, we would do that.
And then, with that, we will adjourn to our regular scheduled meeting at 3:30 on Wednesday, March 25th.